Ten through fifteen. Item number ten is the CDBG application legislation, which is ready. Item number eleven and twelve are companion pieces. Just wondering if we can get just a little bit more detail on what was the outcome of Seeker? Heather, anybody?
Good afternoon, councilors. Heather Lamendola, zoning administrator. As promised, I do have Dan Kostanski here, Director of SACPA, and he did put together that table that responded to all of the public comments from the public hearing for that. So if you have any specific questions, I know he's here and ready to answer them.
Is there any way for us to get like a real short snapshot?
Sure.
So what's on your agenda today is the final scoping document for the rezone zoning ordinance. So we had our public hearing, and as Heather mentioned, all the comments that were received during the hearing and in writing have been responded to. We have added one section on zoning equity that we will add to the draft generic environmental impact statement, and that will probably lead to some amendments to the zoning law itself that we'll have to go through. So that does add a little bit of work, but that's fine, because everybody seems to want to do it, which is great. And I think it is a necessary good component to add into the law. So what this final scoping document does, it sets up the contents for the draft generic environmental impact statement, which is your environmental review for the zoning law. And from now, so we had these kind of strict timelines. So from the time that you approve or accept the final scoping document, through that preparation of the draft generic environmental impact statement, we don't have as many time constraints. We can really, we don't have any strict time constraints on that until we get into a public hearing, and then it's your typical public hearing notice. And that's when you're ready to adopt the law. So that's kind of where we're at, and we have, you know, a little bit of work to do, but that's good. It's a good point to engage councilors and really put the finishing touches on this in a very transparent and accountable way.
Counselor Green?
From the timeline, so in a scenario where the council was in agreement with the ordinance, what would be an estimated timeline of when it would be adopted?
I think from now, if everything went perfectly, you know, you could probably adopt by July. But we might want to slide that further into August or September, just because people are gone during the summer, and it's not always a great time to adopt a major legislation, unless you really feel comfortable with it. But from a strict timeline perspective, probably by July you could adopt.
So I'm a little, just a little confused, which is okay, because sometimes I'm...
It's a complex...
More than just a little.
Yeah.
This is just the first in a series of documents, correct?
There, so there's...
I reviewed this. It's sort of pretty broad.
Yeah, yeah, this is just setting you up for, this is what we're going to talk about in the generic environmental impact statement, which will go into a little bit more detail on each of one of these identified impacts.
And then it'll come back before the council?
Yes.
And then we'll have comments on it?
Yes.
And then we'll go back, so this is like first of three phases maybe, or?
Right, that's right. Actually, it's second of four. So there's the scoping document, the final scoping document, the draft generic environmental impact statement, and then there's a final environmental impact statement. Usually, there's not a lot of changes between the draft and the final.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarity, so the discussion here, or the information here is even relative to what we discussed in the meeting we had, the last meeting we had?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And it sets us up to explore those issues and figure out how we're going to address them, what we can do, what we're not ready to do, and what we need to do in the future as well, so.
Citywide, right?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, citywide.
Any more questions on item number eleven? All right, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, gotta go back to number ten. I understand there's been some updates to the budget.
Good afternoon, councilors. Michael Collins, Commissioner NBD. So we have just received the official allocation from CDBG, or from HUD regarding the entitlement dollars. So what we'd like to do is be able to come back later today with revised budget by the end of the day.
It's more or less...
Right.
So it's a little more in some areas, a little bit less in others. Generally, it's positive. Yeah.
Okay, so overall, it's positive?
Overall, it's positive, yeah.
All right, so we'll wait for that update later on then. Appreciate it, thanks.
Great, thank you.
As I mentioned, item number eleven and twelve are companion pieces. Those are both ready. Item number thirteen. Hello, Ms. Lamendola. Welcome back again.
So actually, thirteen and fifteen are companion pieces. This is the plan development district for a project involving a 100,000-square-foot warehouse for United Auto Supply. And the zone change is only for one piece of property at 225 to 231 Richmond Avenue. This body already approved the majority of the plan development district and their plan. They wanted to add to their land area as well as the warehouse space, so that is the reason for these two requests today.
Counselor, I've talked to the developer, and Heather's guided me through this process, and I've also talked to folks in the neighborhood, and this is, both thirteen and fifteen are okay with me. Thank you, by the way, Ms. Lamendola.
You want to take care of item fourteen?
Sure, item fourteen, this is a special permit for a restaurant within a convenience store, and this is on the corner of Columbus and Erie Boulevard, and this is...
Yeah, Counselor, let's go.
Yes, you charge me.
All right, no further question. My items are ready. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Rudd?
Madam President, item sixteen and seventeen are companion pieces related to the PBA collective bargaining. I don't have any questions. If anybody else, it's the same as it was in December. Does anybody else have questions? All right. Just for clarity, we can't vote on a local law the first time, but we can vote.
Actually, Counselor, you have to, because they're companion pieces. If you were going to advance this, you'd have to table local law Monday, then you could vote on one of them or both of them the next meeting.
Right.
But the other one can't be voted on until, because the local law is the funding for the contract. You can't vote on the contract unless the local law is approved first.
All right, so it will be held for, the local law will be, they'll both be introduced and tabled, basically. Or the sixteen will be introduced and tabled, and seventeen will be held.
Right, thank you.
Eighteen, we talked about this in committee a bit, but basically, it's just the support for, come on up, Dave.
Counselors, Dave Delecchio, Commissioner Finance. Item eighteen, we did discuss this in the committee meeting. Capital Markets, they provide financial advisory services to the city, primarily in the area of compliance with Securities and Exchange Commission. What we rely on them for a variety of items, for example, issue bonds. They prepare the official statement for us. They also coordinate with various agencies in the city to gather some information, financials as well as demographic information that we include in our official statement. We also rely on them to monitor the outstanding bond issues in the event we have a material event notice that should occur. The last one we had was the ransom attack of the district. We need to publicly notify bondholders, and we do that through Capital Markets, who file the necessary documents for us. So that just gives you an idea of type of services we work with this company regarding. This needs to go through the RFP committee.
Any other questions? Okay, all ready. Nineteen, PeopleSoft, the FOAC.
Good afternoon, councilors. Dave Proch, Director of IT. Item nineteen is an amendment of an existing agreement. The agreement's an IMA between the city and the county for support for PeopleSoft. We budget $125,000 per year. The original agreement goes back, I believe, five years now, four years now. We pay dollar for dollar for any help or support we get from the county. When we use a resource, we pay for them. If we use an hour, we pay for an hour. Any questions? Thank you.
Um, wait, wait, wait. We didn't discuss this one in the committee, right? I know, right. I think I'm gonna hold it and discuss it in the next standing committee. Thank you. Dave Clifford, do you want to talk about the, wait, this is, law, we'll do that in executive session, and then twenty-one. Who wants to?
Basically, this is for our process servers. We have to do an APO, and they didn't budget enough for what we needed to pay the invoices, so it's an increase to cover the anticipated costs for the remainder of the budget year.
Where do you transfer the money from, it's from, you're saying you didn't budget enough?
It's basically, they make us do, since we switched over with the county and with PeopleSoft, where it used to be, we could just, we process them as a regular. We, law was different, because it was, we don't know when we're going to use process servers, but now they have everybody with an APO. So basically, we have these three companies, and they budget a certain amount. So if we use them more than the amount, because the cost varies depending on how often we use them, so basically, the corporation council needed to increase the amount for each of these companies, so that we had enough to go through the rest of the year. There's no guarantee, we might not have to come back, but that's what the estimate was right now.
I'm all set for my items. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President. We'll start with item twenty-two. Anyone here from DPW?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name's Pat Monan, DPW.
Do you want to just briefly, I know it's in here, but just briefly describe the agreement?
Upstate has approached us for an additional 50 parking spaces at the Madison Irving Garage. We've priced them at the market rate for the garage. It'll be three-year term with two one-year extensions.
Any questions on this?
Yeah, just...
Actually, what you're doing is changing your request from nineteen, which authorized what you just said, and you're decreasing the amount from eighty-five to eighty. That's your request.
We are. Eighty is the market rate at the Madison Irving Garage.
Michael, did we do this in committee?
I think we did, yeah.
We did, okay.
I know, Pat, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I probably will every time this comes up. Any progress on credit card acceptance at these garages?
It will be part of the bid spec once we bid out the garages. Hopefully, that'll be going out in the latter part of the summer, and I'm very much looking forward to it.
Just a quick one. What's the current capacity of the garage?
That garage has a capacity of 517 spaces, of which 190 are already committed to the Madison Irving Medical Facility, plus an additional 200 for transient parkers. So this would be adding on 50 more. Basically, it would take it up to about 450 actual committed spaces, but 200 of those are for transitional. They're not under contract or anything. It's for you or I to park.
Right, and so 200 is about the average, so we're not hitting situations where we're, you know, over capacity.
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two. Neil, do you want to talk about it?
What are we on now, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, councilors. Lori Ayako, DPW. Basically, we just needed to increase the not-to-exceed amount on accessible sidewalks for the 1920 year. We went over on the last invoice for our estimates, and we just needed to put 20,000 more into the not-to-exceed amount.
Was that the amount you went over by, 20,000 exceed?
Okay.
Just as an ancillary question, we, our staff for sidewalk inspectors stands at one still?
Yes.
One sidewalk inspector, okay. Do we, do we have, is there another position that we just don't fill, Corey? Sidewalk inspectors, do we, do we have like a position that we still, Department of Public Works, more than one person? We just have one funded?
Yeah, to my knowledge, Counselor, it's just that one position for sidewalk inspector.
Because we get a lot of, you know, I get a lot of questions about sidewalks and all that, and we still do by just complaint, right?
For the moment, yes.
For the moment. Well, oh, we have a plan? Is he going to implement the plan?
Well, as the mayor mentioned in the state of the city, we're hoping to introduce to the council in the next, you know, our proposal for a municipal sidewalk program.
Which would include more than one inspector, probably, right?
Probably, yes. So we'd have to talk about staffing, depending on how the program, you know, working with the council, defining what the program looks like, we'd have to talk about staffing as well.
Yeah, and of course, we'd have to like increase the budget, maybe of the Department of Public Works.
Perhaps, yes.
Some money available for that?
Yeah, according to Jeremy, yes, yes. Thank you.
Just want to ask those questions.
Before you leave, Commissioner, question for you, yes. Because when we're talking about the sidewalks and when they condemn them, so I know they're in by complaints, right?
Primarily.
Primarily, but I know that we had a situation up in the Strathmore area that they were being called in by, National Grid did it, but they were being called in by Ballard, and then Ballard did the work. So that's a conflict to me, so I hope that we're not relying on Ballard for this.
To notify us of complaints about sidewalks?
Well, they shouldn't notify us about complaints, and then they turn around and get the work.
Oh, okay.
And that's what was happening up in the Strathmore area.
Okay. To my knowledge, I, yeah, I'm not aware of it, but I'll find out.
I can, you know, similar experience. We, I've had like in Sedgwick and parts of the North Side, contractors calling it in, and magically, before they even get the bill from the city, they've got something on their door, a card in their mailbox, saying, hey, we can do it for this much, and they know it's probably a little less than whatever we're going to charge.
Well, it's easy to throw the contractors who go around enforcing our law under the boat, because it sounds like a dirty move, but that's the system we set up of self-policing. So until we want to step up, I know.
I'm really looking forward to seeing a new proposal, because what we do now isn't working.
Okay, great.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Green?
Yeah?
So just staying on item twenty-three. So the wording says total cost not to exceed 1 million, but then we're going to replenish it 20,000, even though...
What happens, Counselor, we always put the original short title in, and then it says amend the not-to-exceed cost, and it adds the 20,000, 187.
Right, but to me, that kind of defeats the purpose of using the language not to exceed if we're going to exceed.
So that's what they came back to you?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, in practice of working, it just seems a little redundant to me.
Well, you have to have a cap on it, or they could spend whatever they want.
Right, I understand that. I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it just, for me, for us to put total not-to-exceed, but then knowing that eventually we're going to exceed it, then why not just bump it up to that from the beginning?
We didn't know the estimate was going to come in that high.
Okay.
On the last bill.
So that's what I was asking, like, why put that if, in traditional practice, you know that you will exceed it? Then just go up higher.
We don't really want to put way too much in the, because we have to bond for this.
Okay.
So we try to keep it to where we think we're going to spend.
Was that, was the result of the increase in spending because of an increase in citation in work, or because the work itself was more costly than we thought it was going to be?
I think it was a combination of both. The new contract went in, so the prices were higher, and we did do more sidewalks.
And you had an increase in sidewalk citations. Okay, thank you.
And so like next year, would you keep it at the same amount, or?
Um, I think we went up to 1.4 for next year.
Okay.
I think.
And then, Counselor, the only thing I would say that I don't want to encourage departments to do is to kind of inflate their initial number to make sure they don't have to come back to us, and then all of a sudden, they're spending more than they really need, would be the counterargument.
I believe the point of the question is to not exceed the not-to-exceed.
Right, right.
So question for you. So you said you have the amount for next year already in, right? Is, can we lock in prices? Is there any way to lock in prices so that it doesn't actually move up?
It's, most of the bills are coming in per sidewalk that we do. Some of these sidewalks that we're doing may be a year old for estimates. So we're kind of basing everything on that, and then once it's done, maybe the estimate's a lot higher.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Item twenty-four and twenty-five. Yeah, I mean, just a brief recap of what we talked about at the last committee meeting.
This is a, this is a project that we're trying to do to our garage wash bay. We seen that it was a safety concern for us, and that we needed some updates, and those updates are going to cost $524,000. That's our proposed phase one. There is an idea of a phase two. Since we're in there, we're trying to reassure some of the piping underneath, but that's just an idea. That's not set in stone.
And, I mean, you say update, but it's really demolition and total rebuilding?
Yes. Well-needed, too.
Yeah, and I guess the other argument, too, is that it does extend the life of the vehicles if you're taking that salt off, and...
If we get this approved through you guys, we'll be able to wash our trucks in a timely fashion and get all the salt off and be able to maintain them better. Yes, that's correct.
We've got some geriatric vehicles, for sure.
Not the 10 new ones that are coming, though.
I know, that's right.
Questions?
No, just, yeah, I said no, but yeah. So it's just the wash, correct?
Wash bay?
Yes.
Yes.
So the paint booth, we've already done that, correct?
Yes. That's pristine. It's a, if you've ever been down there, it's a good operation for us to have. The paint booth saved us a lot of money.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, item twenty-six. This would be Neil.
Neil Burke, DPW. Twenty-six and twenty-seven relate to the conversion of Clinton Street from Tolman Avenue to West Jefferson Street, from one-way to two-way.
I'm forgetting, Neil, is all of the money to complete this transition going to be a city expense? It's all coming from the city budget?
Correct.
Okay.
So when's that, so when is this supposed to be done, and how do we let the public know about that and all that stuff?
So after the vote, we can put it out to bid, and we have been working with the downtown committee, NBD, the Southern Downtown Property Committee, Property Owners Committee, or whatever their acronym is now. We've been in talks with them for a while now, and getting the word out is something that we're focused on, especially with NBD and a second round of getting more information out.
And the police department, of course.
Yep, absolutely.
Because we went through this, last time I was on the council, of a bunch of the west-side streets, and it ended up being sort of confusing for a lot of folks.
Right, not meant to be a secret. We want the public to know.
Now, this may be a dumb question, but I like dumb questions. Is this because...
Dummy, use the microphone.
There you go, there you go.
All right. So is this because we did some study and determined that this was necessary, or is this by request from folks in the area?
It's a mix. So we studied this back in 2014. We looked at a lot of downtown streets in terms of capacity, throughput, traffic volumes, you name it. We wanted to make sure that this was feasible. In the 50s and 60s, we converted a lot of our two-ways, and a lot of our business corridors with the idea that you want to get cars in and cars out. And sort of, we've come full circle here, understanding that we want to have two-way traffic. We want people to park, linger, patronize the shops. So we also have had a lot of input from the community on this one over the years. Pretty steady drumbeat on Clinton Street.
Is this something that we're looking to do with more of these one-ways downtown going forward, or is this sort of a unique situation?
So it's meant to be part of a larger transition. What that looks like, we don't know, but if we know that it's feasible, we have the plan, and if we were to do any more, we would seek funding to do those. But it wouldn't be this construction season, or probably even next. We would look to push this out quite a ways and plan for it appropriately.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask about a study as well, because I remember discussions. I know a large part of this is relative to what happens with the AD1 VIT up, and showing that we reduce congestion. And so I remember Clinton Street becoming a two-way was a part of that discussion then. But if you could, keep us posted just on how the reconfiguration happens, because I'd be interested as well to see how we work that out.
Sure, not a problem. Like I said, we're working with NBD to get some more materials together.
But Neil, isn't this part of the SMTC? Because I know that we talked about it in that meeting.
SMTC was our partner that studied this for us, so we tasked them with that in 2014. We also tasked them with studying it again in 2018 with updated counts, updated numbers. And the reason we do that is because they have specialists on staff and also special software that allows them to model these things. So that's why we give it to them for their best judgment, and then the narrative comes back to us.
Okay, and so sitting in that room with SMTC, there was a lot of stakeholders at the table. I see you smiling, because you know where I'm going. So why are we the only ones investing our money in it? Because everybody had a lot to say about it, including the state and everyone, all the way down.
So generally speaking, when the city does road work or conversion work, signal work, we pay for that. We're not exploring any non-traditional funding opportunities at this point, but if that's a discussion that the council's willing to help broker, we're absolutely willing to listen.
I have one question. Would the, would this reduce the parking spaces in front of Clinton Street Plaza apartments?
No, this will actually represent a slight net increase in parking spaces. If you take a trip down Clinton right now, you'll notice it's reverse-in-angle parking, which some people really like, some people do not really like. But with this new configuration, it'll be a more typical parallel parking next to the curb that people are a bit more familiar with, and that allows us to net, I think it's about six or seven extra spaces in that area.
Okay, and is there, is it possible to designate those new six spaces to handicap parking?
We are looking at what is currently signed as handicap parking spaces, and if there's room to expand, we will.
Because they need more. There's residents that live in those apartments that are fighting for parking spaces, and when they come home, they don't have anywhere to park. So I just want to make sure if there's an availability of new parking spaces, that we designate some to handicap.
That's actually a good, a good item to bring up, fairly timely. We will look into the idea of residential parking permits with SMTC much later this year. Conceptual, really best practices work from them to give us a technical memo. We're not going to be rolling out anything anytime soon, but we're really just getting the information that we need to at least give it a cursory overview.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Neil, I know we talked a little bit about this in the committee meeting, but what are some of the specific concerns against this, if there's any?
So we haven't had any concerns logged with DPW or our partners at SMTC so far. The design was completed by CNS engineers who study traffic volumes, geometry of the roadway, making sure that pavement markings, travel lanes, everything is up to snuff and meets any applicable standard.
What about from the resident?
We haven't heard any negative feedback from the residents, but again, that's why we're formulating the next round of outreach.
Okay, okay. Neil, I'm sorry, but on that gain, how, I don't understand how that works, because if you pull in, it seems like you would fit more than if you park parallel.
You can, but...
So where do the new spots?
Clinton Street is in a uniform width from curb to curb, so there's a transition that happens, and you need a lot more space curb to curb. You need a wider street to have reverse-in-angle parking, where if you have parallel parking, you can make that work on a narrower street. And that's, it's a simplified way of saying, the way that the geometry of the roadway is, we can actually fix it. is, we can actually fit a few more with parallel parking. If you take a trip down Clinton after this meeting, you'll notice there's large areas that are hashed out where it's no parking. It's because we can't fit reverse-in-angle.
So you can park on both sides?
Right.
Yeah, I just, last question was, for me, was just, so do we estimate three hundred thousand is going to be the whole project that's going to cover us for the entire year on this?
Correct, that, that should cover everything, including our parking meters, our striping, everything under the sun, yeah.
So the whole project is going to be three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And I don't know if I missed it, do we have a, because this is one phase of a multi-phase project, do we have an overall budget for what, what the next phase would be, or are we going to cost that out as we try to cross that bridge?
We will flesh that out as we cross that bridge, but the engineering department is handling a tip project from Jefferson North, which will be a paving project in the coming years, not this year, which would interface with this. So there's an opportunity to extend it, and we're looking into it.
Did you say it's a tip, so is there other money available for that?
For that portion, yes.
Yeah, okay. Did we explore if there was money available for this? I mean, I know, as, I was in some of those meetings, and I know people are eager, eager to get this done, did we explore if there was any money out there for this one?
We did, we turned over every cushion we could find.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight. Neil, is this one you, too? Neil.
Neil?
Neil.
Neil, I think you have twenty-eight as well, or is it Mary?
Good afternoon, councillors, Mary Robinson, City Engineer. Item twenty-eight is asking for approval to issue the American with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for a thirty-day public comment period. And the purpose of this plan is to identify physical barriers and prioritize improvements that should be made within the city's right-of-way, particularly the curb ramps, sidewalk curb ramps, and the sidewalks leading up to the curb ramps. So we'll put it out for a thirty-day public comment period, once you approve it and the mayor authorizes it, and then, after we get the comments back, we'll finalize the plan, and then it will come back to you for adoption.
Okay, any questions on that?
Thank you.
The only other thing is, we did have a Department of Public Works committee meeting yesterday, discussing changes to the food truck laws, which happened, obviously, after this book was printed. So that is something that, if we do get the ordinance buttoned up, I would distribute to councillors, and then potentially have it added by waiver item on Monday, which we could then use the study session on Monday to discuss. Any questions on that point? Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councillor Pennyagwa is not here, so I am going to take her item. We did have a committee meeting on this for IMed, and if there aren't any questions, any questions? Questions, I'm going to call that one ready. Councillor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items thirty through thirty-six. Commissioner Lefave, if you want to, to be honest, I think most of these are ready. What I do have a question on, that got brought up earlier, was thirty and thirty-one were bonding for it. I was wondering.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
Yeah, thirty-one and thirty-two. We're bonding for it. I was curious to know if we could get an update on if we've used all of last year's cash capital, and like why we're bonding for?
That's just, it's, this is how it's laid out in the 2020 Capital Improvement Program. We are, do you mean specifically just equipment purchases for capital? Because last year's vehicles, we're in the process right now of purchasing, and that, those were last year's funds.
Okay.
So we will have spent that very soon, as soon as they come in.
Okay.
Did you want me to review these items, or are they all set?
I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of them, I think these are all pretty straightforward, unless, no? All right, I'm going to call all of them ready, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, I have items thirty-seven through fifty-four. Is, yes. So we did discuss this in committee, but there was one question afterwards. In here, we have that this is going to be, so the Community Foundation will be responsible for dispersing the funds to the community organizations at the direction of the city. So why, why wouldn't the city just do it on their own? Why are we sending it to the Community Foundation?
Sure. So Troy Russo, Neighborhood and Business Development. I know whenever we met, and I came before you in February, to ask for permission to enter into agreement with ESD, one of the concerns that came up was, would the city be able to distribute this money to organizations fast enough? That was why we were exploring other options, and we feel that sub-granting to the Community Foundation to manage that distribution process is going to be the fastest way to get money to our organizations. They also have mechanisms in place that make it really easy for organizations to report their outcomes, and so the Community Foundation can manage both of those processes for us at no cost. The city wants to maintain our ability to be able to have input into who receives funding, and then we're also maintaining responsibility for reporting outcomes on behalf of organizations to ESD at the end of the grant.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Just, so, there's an audit procedure, obviously, when we hand this money to them from the city perspective. I mean, we audit this money, obviously, when we hand it to the Community Foundation, how's it work?
Sure, so.
procedurally.
Yeah, the, the way that this has worked is, we've solicited applications from community organizations and reviewed them with the Community Foundation. Part of that application asked for the activities that an organization would be implementing, as well as the budget for those activities, and their anticipated outcomes and outputs. So we have a good sense of what people are going to be doing with the money. Part of the dispersment from ESD, it comes kind of in three sections, so I believe we get forty to fifty percent upfront. We have to submit a midterm report to be able to receive an additional forty or fifty percent, and then they maintain ten percent until the end of the grant, until the city reports back. And so there is kind of some accountability on our part, on the Community Foundation, and also the organizations, that they're doing the work before they're receiving additional funding.
Sharon Owens, Deputy Mayor, also want to let you know, there's also a direct mechanism for agencies to apply directly to the state for these funds as well. For many of the grassroots organizations, that's an onerous task, so this provides another opportunity for us to disperse money for census-related outreach.
So Deputy Mayor, when they, when they apply to the Community Foundation, are there restrictions that's in place? Is it local hiring, is it EEO, is it MWB, is all of that in, in line for this money?
No, councillor, I am not sure I can answer that question in a moment, but I'm going to find out, okay?
So are we, well, the city, are we still in the position to actually choose which organizations get the funding, or that is strictly from the state? The state will decide which applications are accepted?
For the applicants that went to the state, yes, it's the state. We're collaborating with the Community Foundation on identifying the best.
So you're doing a partnership with them? We're not relying on the Community Foundation to choose the organizations?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a partnership. It has been, they've been great partners in this.
Okay. But they had to be pre-approved by the state before we would be able to review their application?
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Just one more comment. I'm going to find an answer out. I anticipate that the bulk of those funds through the Community Foundation is going to be able, is going to be used to beef up staffing to get people out. So I'll find out how that hiring process will happen within those organizations, okay?
Okay, thank you. Item thirty-eight, we did discuss this in a committee meeting, were there any, you have any updates or anything?
No, no updates. I know the last question you asked is, what business was there now, and the building is actually vacant.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And items thirty-nine through fifty-four. So you can just give us a, just a brief description of this phase.
So these are all properties that are, have multiple on a list at a time, so it's four or more for each of these three ownership categories. I do respectfully request to withdraw six items that have redeemed. Items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, fifty-three, and fifty-four.
Okay, I'm gonna, well, we're not voting on it today anyways, but I don't know if I'm okay with withdrawing some of these, especially forty-four, forty-five, fifty-three, and fifty-four. I want to see exactly why you're withdrawing them, because they are coming in to make a payment?
They with, they redeemed, so they're currently no longer tax-ceasable.
Okay, but then, they're going to do the same thing, so they're going to be back here in a few years, so that's my concern.
So they put claim D.
Right, exactly. So did they sell it?
No, this particular cluster of properties are all ones that are involved in a family trust, so all of the properties that are associated with it, that have popped up on our radar before, have gotten family-based exemptions issued to them. This is a group that, they're very local, they've been very responsive to all of our outreach, they, according to what they told us, they were not aware that they were back owed, and this is one that has not been in, I guess it was in the most recent phase, but it's, that was a relatively recent one, so.
All right, so what I'm going to suggest is, after this, you give me their information, and I want to talk to them, because I don't want them back here in two years doing the same thing. And they can't say they, they didn't know that they owed this amount of money. This is a substantial amount of money for only a few properties, so they knew. Thank you.
Hey, wait, wait, before you go, because I'm looking at the list. So this was the round that you said that it was going to be the LLCs coming through?
That was the last vote list. So this is a, kind of a mixed bag of ownership. And when we put them on this list initially, it was all groups that, like I said, they had at least four or more that were all back delinquent to the same property owner, and kind of in doing our due diligence prior to presenting them to you here, we kind of found a spectrum of where they were at, as far as being non-compliant in other areas of code enforcement, besides just a tax delinquency. So that particular cluster of properties that did all redeem, they're all ones that we haven't had any issues with code enforcement before on. The other ones that are still on the list are a little bit of a.
Right, because I'm seeing some of them are LLCs, and then I'm looking up here and seeing the equity trust people. So to me, that, 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 they're LLC as well.
Yeah, that's a confusing group of properties. I outlined it in the memo that I sent out last week, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have about it.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, y'all done, councillor?
Oh, yes, I'm done.
Okay, and I know before.
President Hudson, I was just wondering, I just want to make mention, and commend the operating departments of the city for their last weekend, very challenging event up on Tipperary Hill, the Shamrock Run. Everybody participated, and we had twenty-seven hundred runners up there, and it took everybody in the city, more or less, to make sure everybody came home safe and sound. So I'd like to commend the fire department, see DPW here parks, and all of them, that worked so diligently for that effort, so that's all.
Thank you, councillor. And I see a school here, not sure where they're from, and I just.
Student council.
Oh, hi.
Council, so you could.
Okay, that's our, okay, well, welcome. All righty, with that, I need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.